I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on the City Clerk, Iva Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your blessings, your provision and protection always. Father, we thank you that we can know you personally as Lord and Savior. Father, we thank you for that wonderful blessing that will never cease. We pray, Father, for your wisdom, your guidance, your knowledge and discernment in this meeting, Father. We pray that we always seek your will and surrender to it in all cases at all times. We give you all the thanks and the glory. Jesus, know me pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have an update. Our EMA Director is now here today due to a death in her family. So I'm going to ask the EMA Representative, Brianna, to come forward for this time to provide us with an update on COVID-19. And Ms. Brianna, I don't mean to, and it may be in your report, I think Josh did it last week. Do you have a breakdown of the age, you remember the age, the age group, like I think at one time it was 24 to 49, the percentage of the positive testing? Do you have that with you today?
I do not have a breakdown of the ages.
Oh, okay. All right.
For those who don't know me, I'm Brianna Cole with the Gaston Edrawal EMA, and I'm here for Ms. Gaither, who had a sudden passing of her family, so our thoughts are definitely with her today. So as of 10:00 a.m. this morning, Edrawal County has 790 confirmed cases with 13 deaths reported. 322 of those cases were reported in the last 14 days. Statewide, the presumed recoveries, that total is 22,082. We remain in the high-risk category of the ADPH Risk Indicator Dashboard. That's a new dashboard that they've recently released on their website that shows the risk to each county. Just wanted to go over some of the testing sites that are still open in the county. We've got Southern Immediate Care in Itala, Hoax Bluff Drug Shop, and that's also McKesson's Health Mart, American Family Care, that's right in front of Walmart in the Walmart Parking Lot in East Gaston, American Family Care, Super B Pharmacy, and McKesson's Health Mart, Care Plus, and Rainbow City. And then also, we still have the Edrawal County Health Department, and they're doing testing Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and that's until July 30th. I'm not sure what the plans are after that, but they will be doing the scheduled testing until July 30th. So you can call for an appointment, that's Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Wanted to share with you guys today, we have begun our social media and media campaign that is called Masks Up Edrawal. We had some billboards that were donated to the calls to the campaign, and we've recently, they've recently took our design and put that up on the billboards to just try to, you know, stir up some chatter in the community, get everyone really thinking about what we need to be doing, wearing those cloth masks. So please help us share this information on Facebook and Twitter. You can follow us on social media, that's @GECEMA, and we're using the hashtag #masksupedrawal. On that Facebook and Twitter page, we also have some instructional videos on how to make your own cloth mask. We have videos for the hearing impaired, as well as our Spanish-speaking community. So please help us spread that information. Send us pictures of you in your mask. So we really want to flood social media with that. And we will be sharing with you guys, I know we had talked about a date in the Antioch area for a testing clinic, so we will be getting you guys that information very soon. So like always, we encourage you to get on the ADPH website and really look at those different statistics that they update every day at 10:00 a.m.
Okay. All right.
All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Tell Ms. Gaither she has our sympathy. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Safety Committee work session and council meeting that was held June 30th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of June 26 through July the 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations. We have two items for unfinished business. A resolution to stay action regarding Emma Sampson Monument. This resolution was introduced as new business on June 30th, but failed to receive unanimous consent for consideration. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Ms. President, if I may ask for a roll call vote on A and B, please.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Was that actually a motion to adopt as well?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All righty. Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Worthy?
No.
Back?
Yes.
Wilson?
No.
Cannon?
Yes.
And Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt. The vote was four to three.
Okay. The next item is a resolution renaming Forest Cemetery to Freedom Memorial Cemetery. And this resolution was introduced as new business on June 30th, but failed to receive unanimous consent for consideration. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Madam President, can I ask some questions of the city attorney before we vote on this?
I have some questions about the legality of it.
Which one?
The forest, the renaming of Forest Cemetery to Freedom Memorial.
Can that be done on a discussion?
Yeah.
I said, can that be done on a discussion? Okay.
Okay. My biggest question is to the legality of this. I know that Councilman Williams has indicated that because of the nature of the proposal, there actually wouldn't be any disturbing of what would be considered a memorial. So my question is, the broader question is, what constitutes a memorial and what? I know there's some questions about whether Forest Cemetery was originally spelled with one R or two Rs. Can you give us some backstory on that? I want to make sure what defines a memorial here.
Well, I'll start with this. There are, the cemetery is a recorded subdivision, and there were four recordings, one by the fellow who, with the five acres where he and his boys apparently cleared out the forest. On those four plaits, which, I mean, those are legally, that you have an engineer go out and define the plaits and the roadways, and it's recorded at the Probate County Courthouse, all those four have one R, unforced, meaning it's a forest like a tree, not forest, a general.
Right.
Now, you have presently, you have the, I forgot the terminology, the cathedral or the?
Chapel.
The chapel, the warming house?
And the confrontation.
And the front gate. Okay? Those were built during the Depression, the WPA program, and those have achieved national recognition under the National Historic Preservation Society. And those are recorded in Washington, D.C., as well as the state of Alabama. Now, those, the warming house, really, I don't think, I didn't see any signage on it, but on the chapel and on the front gate, it has, you know, those are monuments under our, under the State Law Monument Act. And those two monuments, or those two structures, being the chapel and front gate, have bronze plaques on them that say forest, but with two Rs. So I don't know where the other R came from.
So at some point in the 1920s, we added an R to the name of the cemetery?
I don't know when. I don't know. Now, it is, it's back and forth. You will have some indications in the 19, I mean, 1920s, the court action looked like there was two Rs. And then after that, you have some deeds there with one R. I mean, it.
But the original, the original subdivision was one R?
Yes.
So my question is.
As far as I can tell, now, where we're going with this, I guess your question is, and Councilman Williams, I've discussed this at length, is looking at the Monuments Act. I do not believe that a cemetery in and of itself is covered under the quote, State Monuments Act. Now, those three structures are clearly are.
Right.
So it would be like, you could rename the cemetery, but these three structures will forever have the Forest with two R Cemetery on, as well as you got a Forest Cemetery Foundation, which, you know, we have no control over. That's another corporation, which is a trust designated to maintain the cemetery. So it gets kind of confusing.
So my question is, and I know this splits here, and it's probably not a question that can be answered today, but if this cemetery was originally started and the original filings were with one R, and it's not a reference to a Confederate general, doesn't that mean de facto that it's not protected by the Monuments Preservation Act? Because it's not a reference to a battle, any sort of a?
Well, it's recognized as a structure under the, because of the WPA, and that was a name given.
The structures.
The structures are.
Not the name of the cemetery itself.
Yeah. But there are provisions under the National Historic Act that you can file applications of paperwork to, say, hey, can we rename the forest back to, rename the cemetery back to one R?
Or correct the misspelling.
Correct. Because we don't know where that came from, and here's our legal proof to support that. There is a mechanism for that. Likewise, a mechanism, same mechanism to apply for the waiver provision under the State's Monument Act.
Right.
And I think, you know.
But in, but I mean, I think it's accurate to say that in the spirit of complying with the law, even though a number of us on the council aren't big fans of the law, even in the spirit of complying with the law, we have called out those specific things that have protection and protected them even with this resolution.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we worked on that, and I think that's covered at the end of the resolution.
So in your opinion, this resolution is a legal act by this city? We are not in violation of the Alabama Monuments and Preservation Act?
So long as those three structures not monkeyed with.
You got it. Poor choice of words, but I got you.
Sorry. Forgot.
While we're on discussion here about the cemetery, I received a call yesterday from a gentleman that's 83 years old, lives in East Gaston, Councilman Williams District. He was married 57 years to the same lady, and unfortunately, she passed away about 14 months ago. And he called me and he said he does not want the name changed of the cemetery, nobody disturb or anything done to Forest Cemetery where his wife was laid to rest 14 months ago. He said she went in the hospital for some breathing problems and she didn't make it out. And he's 83 years old, and he said as long as he can remember, it's always been Forest Cemetery. That's why they bought property over in Forest Cemetery. That's where they both want to be buried, and she just came, she just passed away shortly, you know? And he's 83, and he's, he's really concerned about it, not only him, but I've probably got a thousand calls about people that's bought property in Forest Cemetery, that has property in Cemetery, that, you know, that's got their loved ones buried there, and they just don't want anything changed about that cemetery, the names or anything. When you go and, you know, you put one of your loved ones to rest there, that's kind of a, you know, that's kind of where you think they're going to be, at Forest Cemetery, where their bodies are, you know, just right then and there. And I'm going to ask this council not to change the name of Forest Cemetery. I have, well, wait, we're, anyway, I'm not finished, that's still my time, we're under discussion. And I know a lot of friends, I've got friends that's buried over there, we have the walk through in time there. I just say, we just leave this just like it is and go on about a business and do something else.
All right. Well, you brought up a good point, is, of course, the name cannot be changed on the plaits at the courthouse, even whatever action we, if we vote this up, it will not be changed at the courthouse. There will be, there will be a little notation there referencing this resolution that we, that the current owners of the grounds have decided this. Now, as far as people who bought lots there, people who are buried there, and as long, I mean, those lots are forever going to be known Forest Cemetery.
So to insinuate, anything other than what he just said is completely disingenuous.
That's true.
It's not being honest.
That's true.
And I think we have to be mindful of that. It's not being honest. It doesn't change any paper that an individual is holding relative to a deed or ownership. Doesn't change anything.
Because they're owners of the property that they bought, and so, I mean, you can't go in and change someone's name on the ownership deed.
And I think the thing with this is, it's a gesture to a large percentage of our community that we're trying and we're willing to talk about it, and we're willing to take steps to try to ease the pain and suffering in this community. And just like this last resolution we just passed, that adds no additional legal protections to that monument. This was absolutely a proclamation, not a resolution. It doesn't add any layers of protection to that monument that weren't already afforded it in the Alabama Monuments Preservation Act. It was a gesture. It was a gesture to member of this, this community that didn't want to see that monument moved. And this right here is no different. It's a gesture. It does not physically impact anybody's property, it doesn't change their, the ownership structure of that cemetery in any way. It's simply a gesture that says, we're going to rename this from a controversial name for over 50% of our community. This name is controversial, and we're going to change it to Freedom Memorial Cemetery. I mean, I, I just want to make it clear that these two things are very similar in nature. And as long as they're legal, in the opinion of the city attorney, they have my support.
Well, I think they are. They're possible. Well, I got a question. You got hundreds of lots over there that people bought in that name, and that's their property. My family's buried there, and my property there too is for myself, my wife, and my daughter. So how do you go about changing something for somebody who owns the property? I don't understand that.
Well, that's exactly what I just explained. You can't.
Okay.
You can't. And one thing I did, the reason I looked at these plaits and noticed that they had, the original plaits had one R, two, is, and you'll know this being real estate, I looked to see if there were any, you know?
Yeah.
Anything, any documentation or restrictions, you know, on the plaque. And there were none.
Okay.
Now, there is going, you know, there is, typically, if you have some restrictions that are recorded with the plaque, it could change things. That requires that, you know, all the owners of the property within the subdivision vote to do this, that, or the other. And really, if you look at subdivision law, you know, all the, and I have found no cases where a subdivision had to vote to change the name of something. All the cases that are reported, and all the law that talks about subdivisions speaks to right-ofways. So like, if you have a house in a subdivision, and some neighbors at the end want to close off the street, which you don't really use, but you happen to use sometimes, you know, all the owners in the, in the subdivision, or a large majority of them have to vote for that. Or if you want to change, if now you want to allow houses to be, you know, within five feet of the lot lines instead of 10, you know, within subdivision restrictions, all the owners, or a vast majority, have to vote for that to make that change. Now, having a subdivision as a cemetery, and voting to change the name of the cemetery, and this would be kind of akin to, I guess, Martin Luther King Mora Boulevard, we didn't change the name of Meakin, we put signs up over there, just, you know, change, it doesn't change the name of anybody who's bought a lot there, anybody who's buried there, it's still Forest Cemetery. Some of them spelled one R, some of them spelled with two Rs. There's no rhyme or reason how that happened, or, and I can't, I can't point to how it happened. But I don't know, and I can't find, I can't find, I can't read in the statute, and I can't find any reported cases that say that if you're going to change the name of all these others, you know, do all the owners of the subdivision have to vote to do that?
They don't.
They don't. So I mean, I haven't been able to find it, and that's a concern I have. Because, I mean, but it, but it seems like the law, the statutes and the reported cases all deal with situations like annulment of a right-ofway, or, you know, or widening of streets, or lot lines, and stuff like that.
What about roads? You talked about closing of road, closings of roads. I have my grandmother's buried on a piece of property in Forest Cemetery, where there was a road right there at one time that came through there, and they closed that road off, where they could go in there and sell more graves right there. So that was, that would be closing the road off, am I not correct?
Yeah, that would be.
Okay, so shouldn't that, right there be protected?
I would think so, but I'd have to go back and look at the facts. I don't, you know, I'd have to go back.
So really, what you're telling me here today is, and I might be wrong by asking you this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway, because I want to know, you're really not sure, really, about anything, are you? About the roads that I was talking about, because you probably didn't know the roads was closed over there in the cemetery, because you brought that up about the other, and there's probably a lot more research you'd have to do to actually give an in-depth opinion, correct?
Well, here's the thing, is, I'd have to look at what you're saying, because I looked at the plaits, and I wasn't looking to see if they showed a road closure, which typically they will. But I, you know, I don't remember seeing that, to be honest with you. So I don't know. I mean, I don't know, when did that happen?
I couldn't tell you the exact date, sure as I'm at the cemetery, you could tell you.
It's not even clear if it, if it did happen.
It did happen. There would be no reason for me to sit here and tell you a story where my grandmother bought. Well, let me ask you this question. If it did happen, as what the attorney was saying, people would have had to vote on it. So did y'all vote on it? What people voted on? The people that owned the property over there, that owned the grave? My grandmother bought that piece of property, she was still living, and it closed the road off, and she just bought that piece of property. The road was in the cemetery, they closed it off. But to his point. And she bought that piece of property. People said, if you close a road over, in a subdivision, the majority of the stakeholders that own property would have to vote.
Well, I mean, it could be under the trust agreement, the original trust agreement at that time. And I don't know, and I haven't read that, and I don't know where to find it. Because you've had original trust agreement given to the Forest Cemetery Board. And it's a real weird relationship we have with them, which is unusual and complicated, goes back to the 1924, 26. But it, you know, there could be a provision in that trust given to the corporation at that time to manage the roadways and close. I mean, those are what you call, you know, restrictive covenants, which typically are put on a subdivision plaque. In this situation, that's the reason I asked him, when did it happen? And he couldn't tell me, so I can't go back and look. Was it some provision under this original trust agreement which allowed them to do it? Or did they just do it and, and, you know, without following the proper procedure?
What's clear, what's clear is whatever happened, and even if, if that did happen, whatever happened, it didn't upset the ownership terms of people who held deeds.
Correct.
It didn't change any of that.
Correct. And, you know, the only reason I brought this up was, you know, we're talking about the legality of this, and, and one thing, when I'm looking at this, I think, well, you know, you have people like his grandmother who've invested to buy a lot here. And when they invested, it was under, you know, it was, it was, you know, they were told, well, we're going to have, you know, access here, here's where the road's going to be, this is Forest Cemetery, here's the term, blah, blah, blah. And now, after the fact, you know, you changed the name, I would say, well, does that, I mean, can we do that? So that's a legal thing I'm thinking about. Can we do, can we change the terms of what they agreed to purchase, you know, their lots for after the fact, after they've already bought it, after they've been, you know, buried there? And so I'm thinking, well, legally, is there repercussions for this? And one of the issues, you know, I mean, of course, one of the issues I'm looking at is, you know, subdivision law, because it's plaid. And I'm thinking, well, number one, his grandmother's deed, she bought a, you know, a little piece of property here, it'll never change the name. It'll always be Forest Cemetery. And I don't know where the deed had one R, two R.
I have, I don't know.
And, you know, and I've, I saw plenty of both. And then it makes, and one after the other, you know, it does, I don't know where the other R came from. But it, you know, do these people have rights? And I said, well, their property is going to, I said, well, what about subdivision law? And so that's what I spent, you know, hours on end looking at that.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, running down that rabbit trail. And, you know, at the end of the day, I came to the conclusion, I said, well, I can't say 100%, but I'm pretty sure that, you know, those subdivision regs apply to the statute, and the reported cases all apply to like, annulment of roads and stuff like that.
Well, and I think a point to make is that there are a few nuanced legal issues that exist with subdivisions that don't upset the ownership terms for anybody that owns property there. I mean, changing the name of a subdivision, misspelling the name in the legal documents, having outdated and illegal provisions within the original subdivision documents, you know, those, even though they exist, they don't nullify the ownership interest. I mean, and I, we talked about this last week. I mean, there's a white-only provision in those original documents that is 1,000% illegal right now. I mean, I don't care where your heart is, you can't just limit that to white people. You don't, you don't have that legal right to do it anymore. And so that, in and of itself, because that illegal provision still exists in that, in those original documents, it doesn't make, it doesn't nullify, boy, your ownership interest. It doesn't change your ownership interest. So, so again, I think this notion that somehow because there are a few legally nuanced items in there that may no longer be valid, are serving to make this name change a greater issue, is just disingenuous. It's not being honest about the legal outcome. And the legal outcome is there was zero change, it's not going to cost these people any more money, it's not going to require them to do anything different. If they sell, transfer, gift, or otherwise pass on or execute these deeds in the future, they're all going to maintain Forest with one R, Forest with two Rs, they're all going to maintain whatever they have right now, and they'll get the same benefit that they would have gotten yesterday. So, so again, I just, wherever you stand on this, just, let's just be honest. You know, I, I think it's important. Wherever you stand on this, let's, let's just be honest with people about the outcome, and let's not exaggerate it. I mean, it's, it's, it's not going to change anything for property owners.
Call for the vote, Madam President.
Roll call.
Councilman Reed?
No.
Councilman Cannon?
No.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
No.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Toles?
No.
The resolution is not adopted. The vote was four to three against adoption.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. Omar Mustafa Laffey Doing Business as Omar's LLC has applied has applied for retail liquor license, Class 1 for Tuck Hook and Bar Lounge at 630 Broad Street in District 5. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Anybody in favor?
A representative of the owner is here. If anybody has any specific questions. Otherwise, I'd say we call for the vote.
Yeah, I think nobody wants to.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt. Second.
Who's the second?
Deborah's second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
It was, I didn't want to speak, I'm sorry. I didn't hear.
Speak for or against?
Against.
Okay. Is that Ms. Vance?
Yeah.
Does she want to speak now? And she has, she will be speaking again.
She, she, it's the one that wants to speak on the smoke-free board.
Okay, well, okay. Okay, does she want to come and speak?
Do you want to speak now?
Are you want to? She gonna wait, okay? The next item is a resolution authorizing change. I'm sorry.
We had a motion and a second.
Yeah, we got a vote.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes. Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Oh.
Okay, raise your hand for the nose. Two, okay. Motion carries to adopt. The vote was five to two in favor.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing change order, number one for bid, number 3403, for the new maintenance facility at the cemetery. The amount is $454.78, thereby adjusting the total contract with grid building construction The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Deborah was the no, okay. Councilman Williams. Motion carries to adopt the resolution. The vote was six to one.
New business? Is there any new business?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider a resolution authorizing a public hearing on a proposed economic development agreement.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Madam President, this might be, this might be worthy of a point of discussion.
Okay, discussion.
Just for the public to understand, this proposed economic development agreement involves the Wakefields Incorporated, or what we know as the Martin's Family Clothing Store. And so this is a public hearing to consider an agreement between this entity and the city of Gaston. And so there'll be a public hearing on this next week. July, I'm sorry, July 21st. And again, this is, this is a, this is actually good news for the city. And it involves, again, an agreement between the city and Martin's Family Clothing Store.
Okay. Department reports. We have Ms. Rosso from, for our financial report.
Good morning. I know we've had a lot to go on this morning, but I'm going to ask you at this time if we could get focused just for a few minutes on our financials, impact of what COVID is doing to our city and just where we stand. We cannot move forward as a city without our finances being in the shape that they need to be in. And we've been very, very fortunate as a city over the many years that I've been here that, you know, we've been able to put money aside, what we call rainy day funds. And, and we have been in those rainy days, literally, whether people realize it or not. But as we all know, going all the way back to March, our governor issued a stay-at-home order that shut down our businesses, retail, our restaurants. They stayed closed until mid-May. Then after that, in mid-May, she did a safer-at-home, which allowed businesses, retail restaurants, to open up, but most of them at 50% capacity. And we still have a lot of restaurants and retail that is still not opened at this time. They've chose not to. They, Chez Flee is still doing drive-through only, as Zaxby's and a number of other businesses are just doing the drive-through. The 50% doesn't work for them. But I hope you can see through this report that the city of Gaston has fared well. And I think that says something about our, our city and how strong we really are as a city. So I'd like to start, first of all, talking about the sales tax side of things. When I did this, I was rather shocked when the numbers came together last week. And as a matter of fact, when I took them down to Frankie, Frankie said, are you, are you sure that's right? So I took it home over the weekend and did a lot of studying on it and made sure all the numbers were correct. But actually, our sales tax for this, now remember, this is taxes that was collected in June, but this is May taxes, okay? Because people that have to remit taxes, whether it's sales tax or occupational, they remit their May taxes by the 20th of June, okay? So this is May taxes. But on sales tax, we were actually up. Our sales tax for this month was more than it was this time last year. And I know you're going to say, how can that possibly be? Well, I'm, you know, I'm, I think, and this is just Lisa's opinion, and you all know me very well, and you know that I have one. But I think that it has a lot to do with the stimulus checks that people receive from the federal government. And even a bigger thing that it has to do with is the people that are on unemployment, that are drawing that $600 federal money on top of state unemployment. And in the state of Alabama, your max on state unemployment is $275. That's the max you can receive from the state of Alabama when you're unemployed. But right now, those people are getting $275 plus another $600 on top of that. So I think that people actually have had more money to spend, which seems kind of odd. The problem with that is at some point, that money's going to go away. Okay, that stimulus money, once it's spent, it's gone. The $600 is due to end for most people the end of this month. And unless they extend unemployment compensation out for a longer period of time, that ends. And all those people, if they stay unemployed, all they will start getting then is just the state portion of the unemployment. So I, I just think that people have just spent money. They're spending more money, which is a good thing and a bad thing. It's a good thing for us, but it's bad if they really don't have it to spend and shouldn't be spending it. So it just makes no sense, okay? But it's, but sales tax was actually up. It was up over $500,000 from the previous month. Okay, now remember, this is when places opened up. We had some businesses that their sales, and I'm not going to name those businesses specifically, but we had some businesses, their sales are up anywhere from 60% to 88% for this month. Their sales. You know, that's amazing. It literally is amazing. I don't know if y'all saw it, but Frankie this weekend sent me an article from AL.com, and it was entitled, "One Surprise After Another: How One Alabama City's Economy Is Adapting to Coronavirus." And guess what, who that city was? It was us. If you haven't read it, it is a great article. And we have had so much negative on our city in the last few months. It is the most positive article because, and most of it is related to our downtown businesses. Because even though they have been impacted, they have survived this. You know, they have survived and they've, they've remained strong. And I'm just telling you, that says a lot for the people of this city, our business people, that I'm very, very proud of because they've stuck with it, they've not given up, and they've said, you know, we're going to make it through this. Now, let's talk, though, about sales tax overall. Since COVID has hit. In our general account, we have lost $355,000 in sales tax. And our, remember, sales tax is split. We have two capital improvement funds that 1% sales tax goes into. In our 320 fund, we've lost $121,000-something. In our 340 fund, we've lost $115,000. So overall, we've lost almost $600,000 in sales tax since all this started. So yes, we have been impacted. But I told y'all last month, the difference was when this happened to us, when COVID hit, we were way ahead of the curve. We were having an outstanding year. So even though we've been hit and we've been impacted, and like I said, by sales tax, we've lost $600,000, we still are still in some ways ahead of that curve, which is outstanding for us. The other thing we need to talk about is occupational. Look at it on your report. It's right the opposite, okay? Occupational is still down for this month. I think we lost, it's down, what is it, 200? And let me look at my number here. Yes, okay. Now think about it, it makes sense. Unemployment is still very high in Etowah County and in, and in the city of Gaston. So we still have a lot of people that are unemployed at this time. We know that that's true for the city of Gaston. There are a lot of employees that we have not brought back, our non-full-time people, that we have not brought back at this point. So our unemployment levels are still high, and therefore, it affects our occupational tax. So occupational is still at a loss at this point. The other thing we've talked about a lot is our recreational income. When we were closed down, we lost a money, a lot of money in Park and Reg. But since we've opened back up, especially Nakalua Falls and the campground, whether we like it or not, it's, it's summertime. People are taking vacations. Our campgrounds have been full. The Nakalua Falls has been full. And so those, those numbers have been very, very good. We've had some boat tournaments, fishing tournaments that have brought in, you know, revenue into our city as well. So our recreational income is starting to pick back up, okay? We're still at a loss there, but a very small loss. So overall, we're, we have done well. For us to say that we are only at a 3-something percent loss in revenue at this time is absolutely amazing. I've been on the phone the last two or three weeks with finance directors and CFOs across the state, on the private side and on business side. And most people, a lot of cities are seeing somewhere in the 20% or 30% range of a loss in revenue. So we are faring well, and, and I'm so thankful for that. So on the year, okay, let's, let me get, summarize it. On the year, our revenue that we have collected compared to what we have done in expenses. Now, like I told you in my report, our expenses are way, way down, okay? We've done a lot of things to cut expenses. So right now, we're saving a lot of money on the expense side because they're just not happening. But overall, we're at about a $3.4 million gain comparing revenues to expenses for this year. So we're still, we are still ahead of that curve.
Does that count grant funding and the other?
That's just our general account.
Just the general.
Just the general operating account.
Wow.
That is correct. Now, one thing I do want to make you aware of is that this month, the month of July, is when our debt payments come due. My office is generating and paying those payments this week, and they're right at $3.5 million. So your expenses are fixing to do this right here, okay? You're fixing to take a $3.5 million hit on debt payments. And we, we have to consider that, okay? And like I said in the end of my report, look, even though it's, it, the, I'm proud of where we are. I think we should be. Like I said, we're so much better off than most cities. But at the same time, we're starting budget season next week. I start budgets. You know, are there going to be cuts in budgets? Yes, there will. We cannot forget about Goodyear. And we've lost Goodyear. Whether, whether you want to talk about it or not, it's a fact. And we have to consider that. We have to consider what COVID has done to us. Estimating revenues are going to be very, very difficult. You know, a lot of people are concerned that the numbers are going up again and that we're going to have another shutdown. There's some cities that will not survive a second shutdown. They just will not. Could we survive it? Yes, we could. But do we want to have to do that? No, we do not. You know, we want to keep ourselves in the best possible position that we can keep ourselves in. And so I thank you. I thank you for being willing to make the decisions that we've made with working with us so that we can keep as sound financially as we possibly can. Any questions?
I just have one quick question, Lisa. I noticed a pattern there that there's some pretty significant increases in revenue in June for add valorum tax, business license, general services, municipal court funds. Is that just because most of those entities were closed down previously and everybody came and renewed their?
It, it is with this, it is with municipal court. Our court system was closed down. Once it opened back up, the revenue started again.
To the stimulus?
The business license portion of it, to be honest with you, is that we've been really working delinquent licenses. We've really been after people. And so we, and, and actually, there has been a lot of new businesses, licenses as far as contractors. People still have been working.
Yeah.
Especially on that side of things. So most of that is just, is, it, it, the economy part of that side of it has not been impacted that much, not on the contractor side.
Thank you. Lisa, I just want to say thank you for the job you're doing. The article that Frankie shared is evidence that there's good things happening in Gaston in spite of the COVID and Goodyear closing. You know, it's, it's not an easy job to do what you do. It's, but it's a needed job. I mean, I was all excited when I heard we had $3.4 million in the bank. Then I became less excited when I hear we owe $3.5 million. But then I realized, thank you for having $3.4 sitting there that we can pay the $3.5. So just a great job to everybody that's involved in that endeavor that we're facing.
We've only got three months left in this fiscal year, so.
Hey Lisa, I got to say that all the naysayers that used to say, oh, no, not another restaurant, thank goodness for restaurants. Because I'm going to tell you, you look at the figures, takeouts, and where that money came from, the sales tax, you can pinpoint restaurants.
Thank you.
And we still have money in our undesignated fund. We haven't had to use that ever.
We have not.
So that's a lot there.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, we'll have citizen requests. Ms. Vance, Ms. Kathy Vance. At this time, we'll have citizen requests, Ms. Vance, Ms. Kathy Vance.
It's nice to see so many people out there who are interested in government. Y'all just don't realize, maybe you do, the big crowd that's outside.
Is your mic on, Ms. Vance?
Uh, I could probably put it down a little bit.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, thank you.
I was just talking about the crowd outside, and it's nice to see people interested in government.
It really is.
1971, I tried to buy a car on my own and was told I couldn't unless my father, brother, uncle, or some male signed with me. It happened again several years later when I tried to buy a house and was told a male must sign with me, discrimination. I am grateful that the civil rights law had been passed and a selfless, peaceful, determined man believed in equal rights for all people. And sadly, his life was taken from him for these beliefs. Because without them, I couldn't have done neither one. Forty-nine years ago, I ended up at Emma Sampson High School and was given students that were pretty much deemed impossible to teach. In reality, I was pretty much at a loss what to do. An empty classroom greeted me. There was an old reel-to-reel tape recorder left in the corner. And I asked my students to talk into it and tell me about themselves, what they wanted and what they needed in life. And wow, did they ever tell me. From about a dozen students, the common thread I heard was they all wanted a driver's license. So I knew I could do that. Little did I know what was ahead. I absolutely did not know there was anyone in school who could not read or do math. I did my research, picked up some driving manuals, and orally taught these students the driver's manual. I loaded these students in my car, and off we went to the licensing office. Since discovering there was an oral test that could be given instead of the written test, that's what I requested my students to take. If looks could destroy, I would have been gone that day, discrimination. To save time, let's just say, after a lot of words, insistence, some threats, the person went over to a bottom cabinet, blew dust off an old cassette player, and every one of my students, one at a time, passed the oral test the first time. After many trips with different students to the range, success was accomplished. Then, later on, one student came up to me, not one of my students, who was sobbing, said he had failed the drive, the written driver's test 11 times, 11, 11 times. As he begged me to help him, I told him that he would be among the next group that I took. Upon arriving, I strongly asked the person at the range why they had allowed a young man to fail the written test 11 times and never offered to help him, discrimination. Yes, he passed the oral test the first time, and then he took and passed the road test in my subbed-up GTO, just as they all did. There is much, much more to this story of the looks and comments that were thrown my way. Thank God for a supportive principle. Three years passed. My next mission in life for the next 34 years was to direct for special ed, which involves starting programs where there were none, convincing parents we wanted their children to help teach whatever they needed, that public schools were mandated by state and federal law to serve them. Most people did not want this, and sadly, to say educators were among them. It was a hard, difficult road for those years, discrimination. From the most afflicted child to the gifted child, we served. So, so much more could be said. After I retired, I hoped that things would change. I needed a rest. But one day, leaving a civic meeting, I saw several people from the state of Alabama taking a survey on smoking. After much, much prayer and thought, I decided to be a part of the original Smoke-Free Coalition. Again, I didn't have a clue what I was getting into. For 18 months, we surveyed, talked, visited, met, and made a decision to approach the Gadsden City Council. For the next two years, we met with every person who was for and against Gadsden being smoke-free, met with council in many, many work sessions, and spent huge amounts of time, donated time, to present a smoke-free ordinance in Gadsden. It was passed June 10th to 14th, and then again on January 20th of 15, effective February 1st of 15. That's five and a half years ago. I want to emphasize, no problems, no problems, no problems have originated from this smoke-free ordinance. This is an ordinance that includes everyone from birth to infinity, male and female, young and old. No race, no creed, no religion is involved, no discrimination allowed. When you gave an exception to this ordinance on January 21st of this year, I saw discrimination again. When you cherry pick your decisions, discriminations occur. What will be next? There's all kinds of laws that help to keep us safe. A seatbelt, doctors are limited in how many drugs they can write, traffic, traffic laws, LACI's laws. When I was initially here on January 28th, a week after your exemption, I was told that this issue should be taken to the Public Safety Committee. And would I attend? I readily agreed. Well, I've made numerous calls, starting the next day on the 29th, asking when this meeting would take place, offering to meet any time. That was four-plus months ago that a meeting could have been held before other issues occurred to take up your time. But no call or opportunity came for me to attend a PSC regarding the smoke-free ordinance. PSC has met twice within the last month about other issues, discrimination. It comes in all forms. Giving any exemption to the smoke-free ordinance is a slap in the face to every bar owner, restaurant business, and person in this city who was and is willing to preserve the health and safety of our citizens by being smoke-free. This exemption makes about as much sense as giving a business a license for a whorehouse on Broad Street and then wonder why venereal diseases have gone up. By the way, you may want to check the voter list for Gadsden to determine who you're defending. If I bought a house full of furniture without all of the legalities being in proper order, that would be on me, not the bank. It seems promises could have been made before reality occurred. I am against no one, absolutely no one, am I against. I am for health. Smoking all kinds does no good, helps no person, it kills. Every one of you know that. You have created a situation where there shouldn't be one. Again, I am asking for you to repeal the exemption on January 21st to the smoke-free ordinance. And you know, basically, we have three days in our life. We have the day before what we do. We have the day we're living, what we can do. And we have tomorrow, what we can preserve. I appreciate y'all.
Thank you. As Mrs. Vance is leaving, Ms. Clapp here. She's coming from the Success, Family Success Center.
My name is Emma Hazelwood Clapp. I'm the executive director of the Family Success Center. I am new to the position. I am not new to the center. I've been there for seven years. I've worked as the financial stability coach, a parent educator, and the Alabama Healthy Marriage and Relationship Program Director. So I've, I've been in this community for a while, just quietly behind the scenes. I wanted to, A, introduce myself so y'all would know who I was, so you're seeing me again. Some of you I have met, some of you I have talked to in the past, and hopefully, we'll be talking again in the future. B, I wanted to tell you about what we're doing during the COVID-19 crisis. And then C, I wanted to tell you about this event that we have coming up. So during the COVID-19 crisis, the Family Success Center did have to close our doors, but our services never stopped. I heard her talking about how people were mismanaging their money. Well, we were still behind the scenes helping people figure out how to balance their money, how to set forth a budget. Those services did not stop. If we have to close again, if we keep our hours limited, which we are currently doing, we're open from Monday through Thursday from 10 to 3, our services will not stop. We're still offering relationship classes for kids, youth, adults, and couples. We're still offering free family counseling. So if anybody ever needs free family counseling, we have that ability to offer that for free. We're still offering budgeting classes for free and working one-on-one with people. We're doing things on a, over the phone, over video chat. I've sat in people's front yards, and we're also bringing them to the center for appointments where we can socially distance and be responsible. So we wanted everybody to know that even though we are over in East Gadsden, and we're kind of quiet right now, we are still functioning at full capacity. So if anybody ever needed any of our services, we're able to. We have 12 actual partners in our building. We have six of them, which are our grants that we write. Then we have six others, and they're still functioning as well. So there's still a domestic violence advocate in our center. There's still parenting classes. There's still stress and anger management classes for Mental Health America. There's still supervised visitation. There's, all of these programs are still happening. So we wanted everybody to know that even though this is happening, we're still functioning. So when people are getting their stimulus checks, we were still helping them figure out how to spend their money. So second, we want to talk about our event that's coming up on July 25th. I'm new to the center's position, so I thought, what can we do during this very volatile time to make a difference? And last week, I heard Councilman Worthy mention how the census was really important. I heard President Toz mention go out and register to vote. Over in East Gadsden, we have some limiting, we don't have a lot of people who are doing that. So we looked at the numbers, talked to Craig Scott at the library, looked at the maps, and found out that our area is a little bit low. So we're hosting an event. We are going to be calling it Be Counted, Be Heard, and Give Back. Be counted by us going out and having an event on July 25th from 12 until 3. Volunteers will be out there registering people to vote, helping them fill out their census. Even if they don't have that little number that comes on that, we can still help them fill that out. And we've asked LifeSouth to come out and do a blood donation. So we're doing all three. If you are interested in being a part of that, you're volunteering, you can please feel free to let us know. We think it's important that everybody in Gadsden have a voice and be counted. We know that for us as a nonprofit, that it's beneficial for us for people to fill out their census. But we also want to let everyone have that chance to use their voice. So in order to do that, how can we help? Well, this is it. We will be offering hot dogs. I haven't figured out how I'm gonna buy those yet, but I'll get it. And we want to feed the people who do come. We want to give them water. We'll give them masks if they don't have one, and we will be socially distanced. This is over in East Gadsden. It's a hotspot for COVID. So LifeSouth will be doing COVID-19 antibody screenings for anybody who donates. They will also be doing cholesterol screenings in case anybody's curious. And they give to 80% of all of their blood that they get, comes, 80% of it comes back to Alabama. And some of that comes right back into our county as well. So how can we help, help them register? We are currently talking to the mobile unit out of Montgomery to have them come to our event. I think it's gonna happen. We're just having to work out a couple of details. They can come and get voter registration ID cards for free for the people who aren't able to get an ID. So we just wanted y'all to know what this was. If there's anything that we can do or that y'all want to do to help, please let us know. We are posting this on our website, on our social media. We wanted to do that. We're trying to be out in the community and reach further out to not only help ourselves, to help this community, but to help y'all as well. Y'all have any questions?
Thank you, Emma. I just want to tell you, congratulations.
Thank you.
My wife, Jessica, actually serves as the president of the Family Success Center Board this year, so I had a little bit of a unique insight into the.
Yeah, I'm sure you did.
The process. And I can tell you that you've done a great job for that organization for a long time, and we're very lucky to have an organization like the Family Success Center in Gadsden.
Well, thankfully, hopefully, y'all will see me again soon.
I hope so, too.
To ask and harass y'all for more stuff. But if you, please feel free to share this with as many people as possible. We really want East Gadsden to show out. This is for anybody. Anybody can come. And if you just want to come and visit, you're more than welcome to.
Emma, congratulations.
Thank you.
Again, I think you're gonna do a great job.
I hope so.
As Councilman Wilson indicated, you've given time and effort over the years. And so this is some, at some level, reward for all your hard work. So we appreciate that.
I left one bag of problems just to take on a new one, but I'm excited to do it.
Yeah, that's how it works.
It's true.
One suggestion that I will make is, one, we are most, if not all, of the members of this council have social media platforms. If you would send an electronic version.
I could do that.
Of this document to the city clerk's office will be, I think many of us will take that and try to do something meaningful with it. The other thing is, you know, as you're talking about this, it may not be a bad idea to highlight the value of the antibody screening. That's about $120 per test value for.
Absolutely, and they're offering it 100% for free. And we just got word like yesterday at 4 o'clock that they were coming. So we hit them up two weeks ago, and so we were kind of just throwing flyers together. But they are very excited to come, and they were saying the antibody test was being done. I'm like, well, that alone is worth coming for. So hopefully, that will bring out some people. And as we continue to promote it over the next couple of weeks, we will make sure that we mention that more often. But we're excited, so we hope that y'all will be a part of that with us.
Emma, the happy and the drawling, I just talked to my hot dog man next door.
Yeah.
And he says, "We'll handle all the hot dogs and what are you handling." Just meet us after and let us know, okay?
Okay, that's fantastic news. I appreciate that.
We may have to put it down as stationary, but we'll get the hot dogs.
I feel bad because I was about to make my husband grill a bunch of hot dogs and carry it all for him, because that's what you do when you have a husband. You make him do it all for you.
Johnny, go make sure you've got the hot dogs. Don't worry about it.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Who is Johnny, y'all?
That guy right there. See, I can see you.
He is now a volunteer.
Well, thank you for volunteering so forcefully.
The hot dogs are right there.
Well, if we need anything else, we'll make sure that we hit all of y'all up because this is a really important event to all of us. And we want to bring as much money back into this city and to this county as we can. And this is how we can help. This is what we want to do. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Cannon, how many hot dogs you think you've given away in your career?
How many I've gave away? $35,000 at least.
Is Ms. Jackson, Glenda Jackson out there? She can come forward.
To the city council, do I need to give my name and all that information?
And address.
Okay. I am Glenda Jackson. I live at 634 Trenton Street, and this is my home. This is where I was raised. And I have concerns when I called and asked Ms. Iverson to put me on the agenda. I have concerns about what has been transpiring in our city, the negativity that has been permeated in the atmosphere centered around the marches and the protests and the Emma Sampson statue. And my concern is that, you know, it has brought negativity to our community. And I come to you because I was raised by parents who are Christians, who were Christians. My mom and my dad took us to church. We were raised in church. They taught me Christian values. I just didn't go to church. They just didn't take us to church. We went to church. Church was a part of our life. My Christian life is a part of my life. In one of the scriptures, it says that, "Let your words be with grace seasoned with salt, so you know how to answer person." So that you, and all, and that God searches our hearts, and He knows our hearts. And that's my concern for the city, and I have been praying for the city. Several of us come out at the gazebo, and we've been doing this for the last five weeks. And we have been praying at the city gazebo for the city and for the city council and for everyone that makes up the administrative staff of our mayor. And I want to, and I appreciate our city council. I want to say I appreciate our council president, Dr. Cynthia Toz, and all of the council members. Because what you see, what you say is impacting people in the neighborhood, in our communities, in our city, and in the state. So I, all eyes have been on the city. And my concern is that I have a prayer for us in the city so that we will know that not only does people in the city sees, but God sees everything. I'm not ashamed of my relationship with the Lord Jesus Christ. And I pray for everybody in the city. And this is the prayer that I have been praying, and this is why God had me to call, to be put on the agenda. And this is the prayer, is the prayer of St. Francis of Assisi. It's that, "Lord, make me an instrument of Your peace." It's that, "Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. And where there is sadness, joy. O divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive. It is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. And that dying does not necessarily mean dying physically. It means dying to our flesh." I pray, and this is that I, this is what I pray also, that the peace of God that passes all understanding shall keep your hearts, souls, and minds in Christ Jesus. And may God continue to bless the city council. May God continue to bless Dr. Toz, our mayor. May God bless the United States of America. May God bless this city because you represent me, this city, and I am one of unity, not of division. So make sure that you realize that when you say things, it follows you. Because my parents taught me, and they were godly parents, and I try to follow the legacy that they left me in being godly men and women of God. Thank you very much.
At this time, we have comments, and I'd like to apologize. Last time, I didn't call on the mayor. So I'm going to call on the mayor first.
That means I have a lot to say. I want to talk about some things that never really seems like nobody knows. First of all, Gaston State Community College, they have all kinds of degrees, all kinds of training. You can get good-paying jobs. There's a lot of grants and understanding over there. We're going to be putting that on Channel 99 and Facebook for here, for a while, because we need people trained. We got probably between 700, 800 to 1,000 jobs open. The auto suppliers are ramping up now. They weren't getting any parts from Mexico for a while, and they're starting to hire Mercedes, Honda, all those good-paying jobs, good benefits. We need workers because the more people who go to work, the more money we have to pave roads and fix things and do all kinds of things that we can do here to make it better for our city. So I would hope that you start looking, parents. If your kids are 18 and older and not working, who's going to take care of you when you get old if they don't know how to work? So you need to get a job. The last thing I want to say here, let me get my glasses here. The census, what the lady was speaking about while it goes, very important, needs to be filled out, sent in. The more census things we send in, the better chance we have of getting grants and stuff back from the federal government. So all those things go in the big pot, and you can't do a lot of things without money. So check these out about the jobs at Gaston State. It'll be on 99 and, what did I say? Facebook. Anyway, thank you.
Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. So I do want to highlight an event that's going to happen this weekend, July the 11th at 2:00 PM, actually from 12 to 2:00, if I didn't read that, if I didn't miss that. Actually, from 12 to 4:00, there will be a voter registration event that'll take place at the corner of Tuscaloosa and Spring Street. And then there will also simultaneously be a census event, a census drive event that'll take place, same location, at 12:00 PM, from 12 to 2:00 PM. So, or actually from 12 to 4:00 as well. So a census drive and a voter registration event will take place both simultaneously from 12 to 4:00. Want to encourage those who need some assistance with their census information to please participate in that event, take advantage of it, because there'll be people there to provide some technical support, technical assistance. And also, there'll be an opportunity to vote as well. Please wear a mask, practice social distancing, do all the responsible things that we as adults, responsible adults, are called on to do in light of this global pandemic. Asking people to dismiss what they've been taught, what they've been told, what they've accepted as the truth, and, you know, that stuff's hard. And then it's even harder when the actual truth is ugly. So the action that, I want to, again, thank the council for civil discussion. We've had a very simple up-and-down vote, and we, in my opinion, have missed an opportunity to send a message to the world and to our minority constituents that we hear you. It's a very simple gesture that would have had very little impact, but to some degree, we saw fit to protect anti-American monuments and anti-American symbols. So that's disappointing, and this debate honestly has been, it has been exhausting. I discount the notion that for people to be hurt and to say that they're hurting, to say ouch, is somehow negative. When people are hurt, they say ouch. That's what happens. And so this notion that to raise the issue and to ask the city to consider the name change of a cemetery is somehow divisive. Again, I think there's a theme of disingenuousness that comes, disingenuousness that comes with those who make that argument. It's disingenuous to call someone who's worn the uniform a Marxist and a Communist because I'm not a Confederate. It's disingenuous to associate peaceful protesters, to Antifa, and some of these other radical groups. And I can tell you that I'm as much against. I think this, I think the theme in these discussions, because the discussions won't stop, just because we voted and moved on with the cemetery issue, the discussions won't stop because obviously there's the Emma Sampson monument. You know, I honestly think there's an opportunity for us to consider different options with that monument. And I'm going to leave that to someone else to bring up, but there will be some more discussion about that. I honestly think that we should have a subcommittee comprised of experts in history and education and zoning come together and actually study and consider the monuments, or the monument, the one monument that we have. There are a lot of interesting points, but again, I think it's being less than honest for those people that draw from a 1968 playbook and try to refer to everyone that desires to say ouch, to speak up and say, "These symbols of hate, these symbols of racism, these symbols of bigotry, these symbols of white supremacy are painful, they're hurtful." Again, it is very disingenuous to say that those people are somehow creating division. We're not. We're only drawing out the evil that's kind of been burrowing under the surface. And so the discussion that you've heard, and a lot of the discussion that you've heard is something, is nothing more than buried conversation and buried discussion that's been there all along. And trust me when I tell you that, and I'm not going to belabor the point by giving a number of these examples, but I can tell you that from an industrial recruitment standpoint, those symbols hurt us. They hurt us significantly. They put us at a competitive disadvantage relative to recruiting. We missed an opportunity to send a strong message to European companies, to Jewish companies, to Japanese companies, to Asian companies, to Chinese companies that are interested in investing in our locale. We missed a great opportunity to send a strong message to them. We can recover from it because we have a lot to offer in our city. We can recover from it, but we missed a great opportunity to send that message. I want to draw a distinction. I want to draw a distinction between where I stand and where I think we should be standing versus some of the narratives that are being pushed. This should very much be a society versus racism discussion. This is not a black versus white discussion. It shouldn't be. And if that's what's in your heart, then you're wrong. This should be a society versus racism discussion. I'm no different than a lot of people. I think it's foolish to try to tear down statues of former presidents. Even as horrible a person as Andrew Jackson was, I think that's just foolish to try to tear down statues of former presidents. They were president once, and to some degree, they deserved to be memorialized. My focus will, has been, and will continue to be on anti-American symbols, like the Confederacy. That's where my focus will continue to be. Those are very much anti-American symbols. And so I think to calibrate the discussion and make it about society versus racism is where the next bit of direction needs to go. I think it's important that we go in that direction. But again, I do want to thank the council for civil discourse, for nothing that resembled overheated discussion. We disagreed on a lot of points, but we had civil discussion, and we moved on, and we voted on a resolution. I want to say this. You know, I spend my life trying to make sure that if my grandfather were here, that he'd be proud of anything that I bring up. And I have no doubt that he'd be proud of us raising that issue, especially what he endured in his lifetime. I have no doubt that he'd be proud. So I want to say this. I want to say I love you to a few people, and there's a theme here. I want to say I love you to Kirk and Jenna Bales of Barry, Ontario. I want to say I love you to Stuart Sutcliffe of Melbourne, Victoria, Australia. I love you, mate. I want to say I love you to Meg Bailey, McGumi Bailey, of Leesburg, Alabama, by way of Japan. I want to say I love you to Andrew Jones of Detroit, Michigan, by way of South Africa. I want to say I love you to Sebastian Gerri of Saline, Michigan, by way of France. I want to say I love you to Frankie Davis, somebody that I consider to be a father figure. It's very, throughout this issue, we haven't spoken probably in the last couple of weeks, not because we're at odds with one another, but just because things have been active and busy. But he's like a father figure to me, and I appreciate him. I want to say I love you to Sherman Gait, my former high school basketball coach. I want to say I love you to David Hooks. I want to say I love you to Ivor Nelson, who's like family to me. And trust me, you ever want to get sideways with me, get sideways with her. I want to say I love you to Tyler Slocum, a redneck's redneck, who's one of my best friends. I want to say I love you to Jamie Moore, to Bill Smith, the individual that Councilman Cannon referenced in my district, who supported me through three elections. He and I talked about this issue, and we said, "I love you" before we got off the phone because we agreed to disagree. But he knows what his wife meant to me. That same wife that I attempted to put on boards and was there to hug and who told me she loved me every chance she got. I love you to Excel Hester, probably the best, single best athlete to come through this city, who's one of my dearest friends and probably the best coach I've ever had. He wasn't my head coach, but he was my position coach, probably the best coach I've ever had. I love you to Jason Wilson for his bravery. I haven't gotten any death threats yet, but he has. It's not fair to him because he stood for what he thought was right, and he did it knowing that he would be, he did it knowing that he would receive those threats. Took a lot of bravery. It's easy for me to stand for it because I'm black. I'm supposed to. But it's not easy for him. So I appreciate that. And I appreciate, and I love you, the late Mr. Bob Echols. Bob Echols sat right where Dr. Toz is twice and apologized. His words, almost verbatim, were, "We didn't treat those folks right. We let stuff happen that shouldn't have happened." Those were Mr. Echols' words. And I can assure you, I love that man. If you know me, you know that I love that man. And I'm going to, when you start calling names, you run the risk of missing people. So there are countless others. But I also want to know that I love my city. And even though we missed an opportunity today, I'll continue to be proud of my city. I'll continue to push, to promote my city, and I'll continue to advocate for my city and be proud of things like what Lisa Rossa talked about today. She highlighted some of the wise decisions that this administration and the councils leading up to this moment have made to make sure that we're in a good financial position. When people were screaming for us to invest in private ventures that probably would have been upside down at this moment, that would have cost us money and left us with nothing in the bank, we held firm on what we knew were sound financial principles. And we're in a decent financial position because of that. And if you don't understand what that means and know what that means, then shame on you. But it means a lot right now that Gaston's in a much better place. And we will overcome the Goodyear issue. It is horrible. It's horrible that it's happened, but it's been on the way for about three years. And it was like a freight train that we couldn't stop. Goodyear made their mind up, and in spite of what we did, it couldn't be stopped. There are some things that probably could have been done by the parties involved in that between Goodyear and the union, but the city had no role in that, and you have to understand that. And I've held my tongue long enough on that. Goodyear had no role. I've been around union, I've been around union company relationships for years, and you have to ask yourself some questions as it relates to that. You know, there are questions that I have about that. You know, I saw a similar situation play itself out in Michigan. That union filed for a federal injunction in court to make sure that the company lived up to its protected status provision. So I asked the question, "Why didn't that happen here?" So I asked the question, why didn't that happen here? Because you give us two more years to 2022, they still would have gotten severance dollars, and many of the outcomes that they realized would have happened. I I wonder why that didn't happen. But again, I'm just an elected official who didn't have a role in that process. We we weren't at the table, so we have no idea why none of that happened. So please, before you try to blame the mayor, before you try to blame this council for the Goodyear outcome, we definitely has have a responsibility to backfill it. But our role in why it disappeared was very minimal, and you please understand that. So thank you for the opportunity, and regardless as to where you stand on this position, I said it before and I said it again, regardless as to where you stand on this issue, I love you. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Worthy?
I'm gonna simply say I'm disappointed today. It's not very often that I'm disappointed, but I'm disappointed in this council because we had a chance to move forward and stop looking in the past, but now we'll continue to look in the past. And every black person who walked past that or drive past that monument will feel some type of way. So it's okay for now, but it's gonna come a time when it's gonna come down, and it's gonna come a time when it's moved. In order for this city to move forward, we we have to, because that's why you're part of the reason why a lot of young people are leaving here and not coming back. And we have all type of jobs right now here that we can't fill, and we and we continually trying to recruit industry in here. And when they figure out that we don't have the job market, the job force that we say we have, they'll they'll stop coming. It's just that it's just that simple. Farer Automotive, they are expanding right now over there. They were pouring 800 yards of concrete a day for a while, for about a week and a half, two weeks over there. So that's a massive expansion. They're gonna have to hire more people. And if all our young people leaving Gaston and not coming back, where they gonna get them from? I'm too old to go over there and work on assembling line. My back ain't gonna hold up. So we're gonna have to do something in this city to attract our young people and to keep our young people here. And I'm not just talking about baseball fields and soccer fields. We we got to do better as a city. We had that opportunity today, but it's gonna come again, it's gonna come up again. So please, people, the census is very important, that we fill the census out, because we'll lose federal dollars, not only federal dollars, but we may lose a seat in the House of Representatives. And if we don't fill them out, who you think they're gonna, whose seat you think they're gonna take away? The only minority that we have represent the state of Alabama. So we need to fill the census out. We're still 11, 12 points behind where we were 10 years ago at this time in District 3. I don't know about the whole city. I think it's right around 11 points for the whole city also. But we we have to do better. We have a responsibility also as citizens. And then I'm gonna talk about the masks. I think everybody should be wearing a mask. Now, this country, we ask people to go and fight for this country and sacrifice. Now, what's wrong with you wearing a mask? That is not that hard. We're not asking you to go and die for this country. We're asking you to put a mask on so you can save somebody else's life. When did we get so selfish as a country and wanna say everything is they taking away my right to wear, that I don't have to wear a mask? You do if it's gonna save your life and somebody else's life. You should wanna do that for your fellow citizens. But we've got to a point to everything is either left or right, conservative or liberal. That doesn't have anything to do with it. You gotta believe in signs. And if you don't, you need to recheck yourself because something is wrong. And I'm gonna ask the council, and after we have our meeting next week, the, we need to vote on it, vote it up or down. We need to make it mandatory to wear a face covering when you're out. That's the only thing that's gonna slow down this spread. What are we gonna wait, till we get to 1,000 cases here in Etowah County and then decide to do something? And they told us 13 deaths, but I know it's at least 14 deaths. They're just not counting it right now because the Glencoe, former chief of police over there, he passed away because of it. So I don't know if they they don't count him right now for whatever reason. But it's more, and there's more people catching it. So we have to do something as citizens, as not just citizens, but as leaders. Our main concern should be public safety. That's what this government, main concern should be public safety for our community, for our fellow man. And and if wearing a mask is gonna save people lives, then we need to make it mandatory. And we can worry about enforcing it later. I heard the same complaints when we went to making people wear seat belts. Oh, they're gonna get a doctor's excuse to, because they gotta show the problem. Well, let them. And we found a way to enforce that. We'll find a way to force the mask if we pass it. A couple more. Also, any for any nonprofits, you can go to the Chamber of Commerce, call them at the Chamber of Commerce, and you can go in there and look on the system for grants. There's a lot of grants out there. They have the system set up in place, and several nonprofits have gone in to look look for different grants, not just from the government, from foundations also. And to add on to what Councilman Williams was saying about the census and the voting registration that's going on down at Spring in Tuscaloosa, let me find this, he's just sent me something. He also said an attorney will be present at the event for those with questions or concerns with a criminal background, wanted to understand their rights and how they can get their voting rights back. So I believe that's all I have, Madam President.
Councilman Beck?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanna thank, we'll start off with a bunch of thank yous. I wanna thank again Lisa Rossa and the administration staff, Mayor Frankie, for a job well done for our city finances. Again, that's not an easy task. You know, and also to thank is our local businesses, the restaurants that have pivoted to offer a different way to get their their food and other establishments. It just shows what people are willing to do and the American ingenuity to adapt and to overcome. I think that's what pivot means. That's kind of a new word for some of us Oprah people, but I I think we used to call it change, but now it's pivot. So but we have pivoted well. Our local businesses are to be congratulated and as well as our local officials. Our police and fire people, our first responders, a big thank you to those men and women that are out there seven days a week, 24 hours a day. You know, they don't have to, they don't get to say it's too hot. They just gotta show up. And so in in these trying times, it's even more so now than ever to remember them and to thank them every chance that 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 we have. Also, I wanna remind everybody at First Baptist Church of Gaston, the corner of Fifth and Walnut, we are continuing to give our feeding program. It's at 2 o'clock every Wednesday, so tomorrow is Wednesday. You enter on the Fifth Street side of our parking lot there, and we give out that food as long as the food is still there, to give it out until it's until it's all gone. And usually, it's it's all given out. So we thank the Community Food Bank of Central Alabama and the federal government for helping to do that, obviously. And it's it's a much needed program. I wanna thank Councilman Williams for his, I always enjoy hearing Councilman Williams' remarks. He speaks very well, speaks from the heart, highly intelligent, and has some really good things to to say today, as he always does. You know, y'all, this is such a big topic and a big subject. I've been told numerous times that I need to do the right thing by some people that I really love and respect. It's it's odd because I'm hearing that from both sides of the conversation, do the right thing. I'm I'm hearing another new phrase, be on the right side of history. You know, how do you do that? You know, probably 100 years ago, people made choices they thought they were on the right side of history. Along comes 10 decades, and now some things are on the wrong side of history. I think the lesson to be learned is that it always changes. Everything always evolves. I told someone last night that I play to an audience of one. I I play to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I don't answer to man, I answer to the Lord. And so my heart, as I've been saying for about four or five weeks now, I'm asking God to change my heart. And guess what? My heart is changing. I I look at things a lot different than I did probably six weeks ago. I would say that what we voted on today, with all due respect, was a premature vote because I'm having conversations with people that are that are on one side that haven't had a chance to catch up in the conversation to where other people are. Let that kind of sink in or marinate just for a second. There's some people that I think can change. They just haven't had time. There hasn't there hasn't been enough conversation. We're right in the middle of a global pandemic. You know, in the business world and manufacturing, they have to pressure test. They'll pressure test pipes, they'll pressure test tubing to see if it can stand so many pounds per square inch of pressure. Sometimes the pipes will burst. Sometimes they don't, then you have to make your adjustments. We're still in the middle of the of the pressure testing, and we're still in the middle of trying to assimilate new information and and to know what to do with it. So I do agree with Councilman Williams, and I think with Councilman Worthy, that this conversation needs to continue. I'm I'm having this conversation all the time with people on both sides of the of the aisle. I have a lot of people that are telling me, stay the course. I have a lot of people that are telling me, we need to change. Well, I can't do both, okay? I can't do both of those. So I think we, I think it's a rush to to get to where we are today. I I wish that hadn't happened. Last week, I tried to stop that, but I was not successful. So we are where we are. But I think we can still have a conversation. I think we can still continue this this talk. New information that I found out this past week, the Emma Sansom Monument is, from best I can tell, the very first statue ever erected in America to a female. Keep in mind, 1906 was the year it was put up. Women could not vote. That's the first statue that was ever erected for a female, not taking into account of like a religious, like a Mary Magdalene or the Statue of Liberty, but to an actual citizen of the United States. I also found out in the United States today, there's roughly 5,575 statues made to either a man or a woman. There's less than 200 female statues in all of the United States. We have two statues to females in Gaston. We have the Statue of Emma Sansom. We have Statue of Nakaluna, Princess Nakaluna. So we have two of the less than 200. I say that not in support of Emma Sansom. I say that in support of, we need to, what I've been saying for over a month now, stop, take a breath, back up, and think through this thing and make sure we're we're making solid decisions. So I think there's a conversation that should be had about where we are. Certainly, there is, and there's a lot to talk about. But I don't think we've had, I don't think we're, I think we're early in the game. I don't think it's it's time to 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 make a decision. And so that's why I voted the way that I voted. I'm I'm wasn't ready to make that decision. And I know I know people disagree, and and you're welcome to disagree with me, and I'm welcome to disagree with you, and that's the great thing about our country. But I'm also welcome to do my research and not make an emotional decision and come to possibly a different conclusion. I won't come to a different conclusion at the end of a bayonet. I won't come to a different conclusion at being forced to to do something. No human likes to do that. So you're not gonna convince me to think a certain way by pressure or or anything like that. Council President Toz said that about two weeks ago. I won't be bullied and I won't be threatened. That's no way to have a conversation. Everybody wants to have a conversation, but what a lot of people wanna do is they wanna have a conversation, their definition of you sit and listen to what I say and do what I say. That's, y'all, that's not a conversation, and I'm not gonna take part in that kind of a conversation. But I am having conversations with level-minded people that are willing to educate me and tell me how they feel. And I'm a good enough person that I'm gonna listen to that. Dr. Clarence Underwood went to Carver High School, graduated, I can't remember, maybe in the early 40s, late 30s, and on to a very illustrious career. He was the athletic director at Michigan State University. I served on Etowah County Sports Hall of Fame. We voted him into the Etowah County Sports Hall of Fame, one of our great African-American citizens from Gaston. He and I have had a couple of conversations about this very topic. I wish everybody could hear those conversations and hear his words and and hear how he approaches this sensitive topic. He doesn't approach it with his finger pointed. He approaches it with his his hands folded like this, and he wants the Sansom Monument moved, and he has reasons why he feels that way. I'm I'm inclined to agree with Dr. Underwood and 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 his reasons. But I've I've gotta have time to bring other people along with those reasons, other than just to step out and just boldly cast a vote and not have any substance to it. So we need to have this conversation. It's 2020, and we need to be talking about this, but we need to talk about it in a decorum and in a atmosphere of love for one another. We can disagree and still have love for one another, and we can educate people that may not know certain things about certain things, and then maybe they'll have a different feel. I'll be honest, I've I've, my feelings have changed on a lot of topics in the last six to seven weeks because I've done my research and I've reached out to people that don't look like me, and I've asked them what they thought. And so I'm, my heart's changed. Remember, I've been talking about praying for our hearts to change? And I said, I wanna start with mine first. I was serious, okay? That's just not talk speak. So I would encourage everybody, take a step back, take a deep breath, and insert yourself and and find your motives for why you feel the way you feel. It might surprise you. There'll be another vote one day, okay? There will be another vote one day. This isn't like a one and done. So everybody needs to just give this time to work out. Again, I think it was a premature time to bring it. I respect it being brought to the table to be voted on. I just think that it was early. The census, that's all I can say about that. I could talk about it all day. Y'all don't wanna hear me, you know? I think we're all talking about it. We're playing the same record, so to speak. We need people to complete the census. If you know somebody, if you wanna have a conversation, ask your friend or neighbor if they've completed the census. It's directly tied to the lower socioeconomic citizens of our city receiving federal money and federal funds. We need that money. We need our people to fill out. We're behind. We are behind. We're not doing well. So please, fill out the census. Please show up to these programs and and do and and register to vote. You wanna make systemic change in our city, in our state, in our nation, you gotta vote. We're a nation of laws. That's why I said, go see Gil Lisbon, Andrew Jones, Craig Lipscomb, and Becky Dordren. If you don't like a law, that law's not governing here at 90 Broad Street. That law is governing down in Montgomery. You're arguing to the walk, to the wrong people. If you wanna change it, go to Montgomery or go to the people that are in Montgomery. That's how our government works. Educate yourself. The Thursday at 10 o'clock, I I might be premature on this, but we're having a, at my suggestion, we're we're gonna have a COVID panel on basically COVID situation and is it important to to wear a mask? And here goes another subject, you know? Some people would fight you over having to, literally fistfight you over having to wear a mask. I get more comments on masks than I do the statue. Then you got some that are begging people. Then you got some that are begging people to wear masks. So, I don't know what it is. It's that pressure test. For all this wound-tied as we can be because of this COVID, and lack of money, and this, that, and the other, and it's hot, or whatever it is, but we've got to, as the council, we've got to, let's check our emotions at that door over there when we walk in here. We've got to make sound decisions for the betterment of our city. So we're going to have people that are experts in that area, and they're going to come tell everybody about COVID, and about the mask, and about how all that works. I don't think there's one council member up here that's qualified to make a professional opinion about a mask. None of us are doctors, or healthcare workers, or anything like that. We all have our opinion, and we can all Google and read, but we need to have local people that live here tell us what they think, and that's what they're going to do. And then I agree with Councilman Worthy, then we need to have a vote. And I'm ready to make those hard decisions, okay? That's what we got elected for. And I'm ready to make these hard decisions. Can't wait to do it. But I'm wearing my mask, and I wish everybody else would wear a mask. I think it's the prudent thing to do. I think it's the right, hard thing to do. Here's the deal. If you don't want to wear a mask, and if you're right, then I've just worn a mask for a few months, and it's not that big a deal. If you don't want to wear a mask, and if I'm right, and you infect somebody and they die, then that's a whole nother set of circumstances. So I just don't see the big deal. I don't see that we're taking away anybody's rights. I just don't get it. I mean, I literally just don't understand. The argument to me is just, it falls flat. You know, be nice. Treat people the way you want to be treated. Wear a mask, and social distance, and, you know, the world will be a much better place. Want to end with this comment about Ms. Glenda Jackson. Ms. Glenda Jackson, I've been on this council about 20 months, and she's a pretty familiar face up here. Today was her finest hour. The prayer of saying, "A sissy is a wonderful prayer." Look it up and read it. We all, talk about our hearts, we all need to read that prayer. We all need to meditate on that prayer, because it's beautifully written. It's hundreds of years old. We think our problems today are brand-new. Y'all, the problem's been going on forever, okay? That prayer is helpful, and I appreciate Glenda's heartfelt. I was looking right at her, and I could tell she meant every word that she said. See, her heart, I think, is in the right place. I want my heart to be like Glenda Jackson's heart. I want all of our hearts to be like Glenda Jackson's heart. So, thank you to Glenda Jackson for your words today. They were very timely, and very much appreciated by this council member. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson?
I'm not going to harp on the census too long, because I'm coming to your house. It's over. I'm going to knock on every single door in District 5. We're at the bottom of the barrel. Nobody will fill that census out, but you're about to. We're going to stand there on the porch and do it together. So just be ready for that. That's a promise. You know, the mask argument, I agree with Councilman Back. You know, I learned a long time ago, as a small business owner, everybody has the most important thing happening to them in their life at that moment. And they're going to react the same way that you would react to the most important thing happening in your life at that moment. What I've learned on the city council is, for some people in this community, the fact that the trash didn't pick up on Thursday is the most important thing happening in their life at that moment. And they react the same way that I would to a multimillion-dollar contract falling apart. You know, I mean, they're going to give it the full treatment. And so, there's a lot of people out there that are reacting to this mask conversation as if it's the most important thing in their life. And there's a lot of emotions on both sides of it. But again, I've done it. I actually looked at my watch the other day as I did it. I pulled up to the shell station, got out of the car, took my hat off, put my mask up like this over my head, put my hat back on, went inside. I bought a bag of potato chips and a Gatorade, and came to the counter, checked out, got back in my car. Forty-one seconds. I wore that mask for about 28 of the 41-second transaction. If asking somebody to wear a mask for 28 seconds when they go in a gas station is taking your civil liberties away? If the alternative is that someone might die from a disease that they in no way could have prevented themselves from getting? I just think that's a sad day, if that's where we are, to where the most important thing happening in our life is somebody's going to make me wear a mask for 28 seconds when I go into a gas station. And I think we should all keep that in mind, and try to keep the mask conversation relative. As for the monument thing, it's no secret where I stand on this, guys. Everybody's said enough about it. I think it's time to go. I think it's part of us moving forward. And I don't think we can have the radical economic change that people want to see in Gadsden while we're hanging on tooth and nail to our past. I think Councilman Williams said it right, and I'm not going to belabor it, because I worry about it having a negative impact on our recruitment. And I think it does. I think there's some major brands out there that would think twice about locating in those situations. But like Councilman Williams said, we'll overcome that. I mean, David Hooks, and Frankie Davis, and all these people that work tirelessly every day to recruit businesses, you better believe they've been laying under their bed at night going, God, I wish they would just shut up about this. You know, this makes my job harder. And that's their perspective from an economic development standpoint. And I get it. It does make their job harder. And that's my point. I think eventually, we're going to move past this idea of idolizing Confederate monuments and this glorified story of our past that includes a lot of hurt for a lot of people that we say out of one side of our mouth are supposed to be equal. If they're equal, I don't understand why we can pass a resolution today that preserves that monument. And again, it's totally symbolic. That preservation resolution, it applied no additional legal protection to that monument. It was a showpiece. It was a way to show certain members of this community, they're not going to touch this monument. And I'm fine with that. I get it. That's the way politics works. But I don't understand why we couldn't turn around and do the exact same thing on the next resolution? And say, okay, this is democracy. This is compromise. We'll let you pass your resolution, and now you let us pass ours? And it sends an olive branch. It sends a signal to this community that says, we can work together. We can compromise. Both sides can give a little and meet in the middle. But that's not what happened today. What happened today is what's been happening for a long time on this very subject, which is hold the line, don't give an inch, do not compromise at all. And I'm just telling y'all, that's not the way politics works. It's not the way government works. And it's not the way life works. In my business, I'm telling you, I sit down every day and negotiate contracts, and give up things that I don't want to give up, in order to get things that are important to me. And for whatever reason in this conversation, that just doesn't apply. The only answer that anybody's willing to entertain is all or nothing. And that's the reason I will continue to call for a blue-ribbon commission that is appointed by the members of this council and the office of the mayor, that should also include subject matter experts from our libraries, our historians, our museums, an attorney to talk about these issues in earnest. Not just regurgitate rhetoric back and forth at each other that we saw on Facebook, but actually force people to get in a room, and sit down, and listen to their neighbor. You know, we talk a lot about youth. You always hear, the youth, you know, children are the future. The youth is the future of our community. We've got to do what we can to make a better future for our youth. And when people say to me, you know, when I ran for city council, people said, you know, we need a young person with vision. And what they really mean, a lot of them, is not that we need young people with vision. They mean, we need a young person to continue my vision of what I want things to be like. I just need a younger version of it. So, when you invite young people into the conversation, you have to be prepared that they are going to say some things that you've never heard before. It doesn't make them wrong. It doesn't mean they should. I had a lady on social media tell me to stick to beer, son. You know, I mean, I've received awards from the last three governors of Alabama. I was the first-ever Young Entrepreneur of the Year at Auburn University. I've gotten accolades and awards for our business accomplishment, and she said, stick to beer, son. So, everybody wants youthful leadership. I've done everything I was supposed to do, but now I just need to go back over there and stick to beer. You know, so when you say you want youth in government, you've got to be prepared that they're going to say some things that you may not necessarily agree with, or you might not have necessarily heard. But it doesn't mean they're wrong. It doesn't mean they're ignorant. It doesn't mean they don't know what they're talking about, or they need to take a backseat. There needs to be a balance of the steady hand of leadership that has been here, individuals who have led this community year after year through these challenges. You know, there's a ton of experience that I learn from. Every day I come in this, every time I walk in this building, I learn something from somebody who's been here 10 years, 12 years, 15 years, 25 years, 30 years. Every day, I learn something. But all I'm saying is, they can learn something from young people, too. And that's what we've got to do. We've got to create an environment where young people have a voice, and we're willing to listen to our neighbors, and realize, it's us against all, it's us against the world, y'all. It's not about what's happening in New York, or Seattle, or Antifa, or none of this. It's all just gibberish to keep us mad at each other. The only thing that I care about is Gadsden, Alabama. That's it. I don't care about anything else. It is us against all y'all. You know, it's this city versus everybody. And if we can't ever get on that same page, and again, that's why I'll call over and over again for a commission that is made up of members of this community to have an ongoing, living, breathing, never-ending conversation about equality, and diversity, and justice in this community. And the sooner we do it, the sooner we can have all the things that people want to see happen in this community. And y'all are so close to connecting the dots. You know, y'all want to know, when are we going to land that big industrial project, you know, that's going to bring some high-paying jobs? When are we going to get fun stuff to do in this community, you know, where there's nothing for kids to do? And then you sit up here and listen to Adrian Reed talk about all these talented individuals. And it's not just in the African-American community. I have tons of white friends that left this town because of the racial undertones that lie just under the skin around here, you know, just under the surface. And they always have, in our school systems, in our business community, in the, you know, it's always right there under the surface. I have tons of young people, friends, who have left this community for that reason. And until we create an environment, we're not going to see that explosive growth. We're not going to see that transformative economic event that we all want to see in this community if we don't have a transformative cultural event in this community first. And I hope, and like Councilman Back said, we all got up here, and we all have our passionate opinions, but every single one of us respect each other. Every single one of us had conversations before this meeting, and will have conversations after this meeting. I was telling somebody the other day, most of you guys don't know, not so much now, because of the coronavirus and the issue with restaurants, you know, most weeks, we all get together right after this and go eat lunch. We sit around and talk about our families, and our children, and what our vacation plans are for the year, you know? So, all of these people, what you saw was, were people representing their community and democracy at work, and we have a tremendous amount of respect for each other. And if more members in this community understood that, we could get to business. We could get to work pushing this community forward. And that's all I want to say. So I'll continue to call for that commission, and hopefully, we can make it happen. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman McCannan?
Well, I'm a, I don't have any kind of awards. I had never met the governor, or anything like that. Well, back up. I sent the governor to the venue one time when she came over there. That's the only dealings I've ever had with the governor. I said hi, and that was it. I've never got any awards, or anything like that. Never had a business, you know, a big business. And I'm just an old working guy that ran for city council that was a garbage man at one time. I worked for the city of Gadsden, and I was worked on the back of a garbage truck for 10 years. And I worked my way up to a loader truck, and finally in supervision before I retired. But I come from a poor family. We didn't have a lot of stuff, but we did have love, and we all love the Lord Jesus Christ. We had all that in our heart. We didn't have a lot of money. We couldn't do a lot of stuff. And I said that to talk about, to bring that into the cemetery. I don't know what year it was. My granddaddy died, and some of my kinfolks on some property over there, my dad's kinfolks on some property in Forest Cemetery. When my granddad died, they buried him. My grandmother, my mother, my grandmother and my father and his three sisters buried him over there. Well, lo and behold, they put up a tombstone, you know, up there, and they did not know that the road right beside them, there wasn't place for my grandmother to be buried there. I loved my grandmother dearly. She died when she was 91 years old. She outlived just about all of her kids, but one. And so, when they, there's a road right there beside the grave, and so, she wanted to be buried right by her husband. She couldn't. They closed that, Forest Cemetery, closed that road off, and they started selling lots right there. I never will forget it. I was a young kid. I don't know how old I was, but I was young. My grandmother worked at a little restaurant, Townhouse Restaurant, I think it was called, out there in East Gadsden. She probably made 50, 60 cents an hour, not much. She had a little old jar. Every day when she would come home, she would take that jar, and she'd put what tips she got in it. Back in those days, it might have been 75, 80 cents a day, but she put it in that jar. When she found out that she could be buried next to her husband in Forest Cemetery, that they had closed that lot off, she was tickled. I mean, she was tickled. She got that jar of change, or little ones, whatever she had in there, got my dad and his three sisters, and they went to Forest Cemetery, and they bought a lot for my grandmother. She worked and paid for that little lot she got. It probably wasn't much in those days. I can't remember how much it was. But that's just one story about Forest Cemetery. I've got calls from people 91 years old, that's got loved ones buried up there, begging me. They would cry. They live in Hokes Bluff. I've got them people from California that's called me, have loved ones up there, people from South Side, Rainbow City. I could go on and on and on. But they didn't want, you know, the cemetery to be changed. They was actually crying on the telephone. I make my motions on people, what people ask me to do, and I pray about it, and I kind of seek the Lord's will in everything I do. And I pray for all of these guys up here. Every night, I pray for them. I pray for our city. I pray for these marches going on all over the world. I do all this. I just think now that we've kind of moved past what we've been arguing about for the last, or discussing about the five or six weeks, we might can move on right now for a while, and get back to what our city really needs. We need to get jobs going here. We need to get the economy built back up. Our sermon said, we have jobs, but nobody wants to work, you know, right now. We just need to figure out something. I mean, why would you want to go to work if you're getting $875 a week unemployment? When you go back to work, make $200 or $300. That never made good sense to me when they did that, but you know, I'm not a, like I said, I was just an old garbage man that run for city council. But that's my thoughts for today, and I'm on that Mr. Reed handle from here.
Thank you, Lord.
Councilman Reed?
Yeah. After all this inspirational talk for the last hour and 10 minutes, I would just like to say, let's take all that rhetoric, and put it right on this council, and from this day forward, start working for the people who elected us to come up here and not do things of this nature. We are a financial organization. We're supposed to be handling the money of the city. And that's where I think we ought to stand. I thank Brother Worthy for bringing in Führer, their coming forward, they have job opportunities. But I got to say in opposition to one thing. The state of Alabama is probably known as the automobile industry of the world. We've got Japanese, Chinese, we've got German, we've got every maker that you can think of in the state of Alabama now employing. Right here in Gadsden, Alabama, our IDA has probably two or three good prospects. This is not bothering them at all. They're interested in money. So I'll drop that part. Glenda Jackson, thank you so much for coming. I'm going to tell you something. I've known Glenda for 20 years. She does so much good work in her neighborhood, it's unreal. And like Kent said, when she came this morning, gave her talk, and had that prayer, she outdid herself. She brought the number one, as far as I'm concerned. That girl is for real. I put a lot of stock in her. Bringing it home, I want to thank everybody who enjoyed and came to the fireworks on July the 4th. You'll never know how much pleasure it is for the Gadsnet Oil Patriots Association to put that on for everybody. We got a lot of good backing. We really do. But we put it on just what I said, for everybody's pleasure. And I want to thank the police department for their help. We at the last minute lost our security. I called the chief. He called the mayor. He gave the okay and they went down and handled theirsself on the boardwalk and made it possible for that firework to continue on. That's all I have. Thank you.
I would just like to start by saying I want to thank the citizens of District One and also the citizens of Gadsden for their support and the opportunity to serve them on this city council. I'd like to read something that came from a post that came from either the leaders or a leader in the Black Lives Movement. It says, keep the focus on the thing that actually make change. It goes on to say that we came as close as we could imagine to having police reform in this country and then everyone just settled for toppling statues. It says, the police still getting away with murder. I know that some of you came to see how I was going to vote. Some of you are listening to see how I was going to vote. Some of you have even met in groups and to discuss how I was going to vote. I want to change and you elected me to represent you, but you did not elect me to be a puppet on a string, to be dangled by any particular group. I know that I can't please everybody and everybody won't be pleased. But basically, two years ago, there was Toles, there was William, there was Worthy, and there was Billy Billingsley, four black council people on the city council. Not one time did these issues come up. Nobody that was against it came and said anything. Nobody that was for it came and said anything. Even the descendants didn't come forth and say anything. What went on those four years that we were on the council was people ridiculing and dogging the city council, especially the four black city councilmen that was on the city council during that time. And so now the only thing that was done then, it was a battle cry. The battle cry then was, they ain't doing nothing. And so now we have, we have this issue. We need to change. We need reform. If it's nothing but in the voting area. If you remember the last city election we had, only 1,200 people voted out of a population of 3,600 people. And you don't think that we don't need help? What about the criminal justice system? What we need to do is work to change issues that affect the injustices of black and brown people, men and women that are in the criminal justice system. Mental health. We need reform in mental health. That's the reason why we have all the issues that we have is because of mental health. We're in a pandemic. And yes, we're concerned about a lot of things, but this issue, maybe if it had a came up then when it was four black councilmen, maybe both of us would have passed. But nobody said anything about that, but now it's a big issue. Now I'm supposed to be the bad person in all of this because I don't want to make change. I do want to make change, but think about it. Think about, think about what the movement started for. It started for a police reform and you have taken it and moved it into something else to divide this issue. There are people out there that are waiting. They're just waiting for one little spark so that we can have a race ride right here in this city. And then what are you going to say then when somebody get killed or somebody get hurt? And then you're going to say, I'm sorry, you can't change any of that. So I stand on the side of justice and righteousness and there's no color in that. There's nothing in that. Some of you may agree, some of you may not agree, and some of you probably don't even care how I vote. I'm voting to fight for you. I will fight for you. I will work for you, but I will vote my conscience. Council meeting is adjourned.